Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the Bellflower City Council to order Monday, March tenth, two thousand twenty-five, here at the City Hall Council Chambers at five thirty P. M. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. Okay, closed session items. Does anybody have any conflicts?
No.
Okay, Mr. Smoot, you want to read the items into the record?
Sure, Mr. Mayor. The council recessed to close session for the two items listed on the agenda, three A and three B, one conference with legal counsel initiation of litigation one case, conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation documents are with the city clerk's office.
All right, with no conflicts, we're going to recess to close session. All right, we're going to re- re- convening the open session, and I'd like to call it to order. There was no reportable action in closed session earlier, and with that said, roll call, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Here.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Here.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Here.
Councilmember Coops?
Here.
Mayor Dutton?
Here. All right, can I have everybody rise for the invocation led by Councilmember Wendy Morris and the pledge of allegiance by Myer- Brian McNerney, Director of Public Safety?
Lord, I come before you and ask for a special measure of safety for the members of our military as they serve our country and around the world. I pray for our first responders and our law enforcement as they protect and serve our city and the cities around us. I ask for wisdom and grace for our city staff and my fellow council members as we work together to serve the best interest of our community.
Everyone, please remain standing and place your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the city, we're going to do city council announcements. I'll go first. The Bellflower Parks and Recreation Department provides engaged in programming for individuals with adapted needs. Though it's adaptive recreation program, the meeting is, is meeting twice a week, the program offers a variety of activities, including indoor and outdoor games, crafts, and sports. Open to participants ages ten and older, this free program welcomes individuals of all ability levels. Join the fun at Cruthers Park located at one oh five five hundred Florivista Street on Tuesdays and Thursdays from four to six. While pre-registration is required, participants can join at any time during the session. Those who require assistance must be accompanied by an adult or caregiver that is eighteen or older. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension twenty-two sixty-one. Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. Bellflower residents can safely dispose of their old electronics at the upcoming e-waste recycling event taking place on Saturday and Sunday, March fifteenth and sixteenth, from nine A. M. to three P. M. at Woodrop Elementary School located at one five three three two Eucalyptus Avenue. This is an opportunity to recycle items that have reached their end of life, whether they're working or not. Accepted items include computer monitors, televisions, printers, laptops, home entertainment systems, phones, and more. Major appliances such as refrigerators and microbrews will inc- will incur a service charge. fluorescent light bulbs and household batteries are not accepted. This event is a great way to contribute to a cleaner, greener Bellflower. For more information, please call five six two eight oh four six five four five. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas. Councilmember Dan Coops?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. CRNR offers free bulky item collection for residential customers. You can request a pickup for items that do not fit properly in your carts to help keep Bellflower clean and tidy. Proper disposal of large items reduces landfill waste, prevents pollution, and provides opportunities for reuse. Bulky items include furniture, appliances, electronic equipment, residential waste, clothing, and tires. Items must not be more than eight feet in length, four feet in width, or weigh more than a hundred and fifty pounds. To schedule a bulky item or e-waste collection, please call five six two nine four 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 seven one six. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Coops. Councilmember Wendy Morris?
Thank you, Mayor. Join Steel Craft located at one six five zero zero Bellflower Boulevard for a weekend of St. Patrick's Day festivities this Saturday and Sunday on the March fifteenth and sixteenth. Enjoy authentic Irish tunes by the Irish band, The Bell Boys, on Saturday, March fifteenth, from one to four P. M., along with green drinks and food specials. Bring the whole family on Sunday, March sixteenth, from one to four, for kids crafts and a meet and greet with Bluey. There will be fun for all ages. For more details, call five six two four four five three zero one eight. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris. Councilmember Victor Sanchez?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Bellflower. The Bellflower Certified Farmers Market at Town Center Plaza located at one six five two one Ardmore Avenue operates from three to seven P. M. every Monday, excluding certain holidays. Shoppers can enjoy a wide selection of fresh produce, bread, food vendors, and handcrafted specialty items. Come support local farmers and artisans. For more details, call five six two eight oh four one four two four, extension two zero one three, or visit W W dot farm, farm and craft market dot com slash Bellflower. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Sanchez. All right, we've got presentations next. Now we're going to give out a presentation for the National Women's History Month, and we have Ms. Ally Morris and Ms. Michaela Strange. If would meet us up here with my colleagues on the riser, and we'll get this presented. That's tough. Here we go. In appreciation of Women's History Month, we're going to have these two young ladies receive this. Whereas, March is National Women's History Month, and National Women's History Alliance has designated the theme for Women's History Month two thousand twenty-five as Moving Forward Together. Women educating and aspiring for generations, and American women in every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions and growth in the strength of our nation for countless record and uncover, and unrecorded ways. American women are practically particularly important and established the early charitable and pathelena topic in cultural institutions in our nation. Therefore, I raid, raid, I raid Dutton, Mayor of the City of Bellflower, do hereby proclaim March twenty twenty-five as National Women's History Month, signed by myself, Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas, Councilmember Dan Coops, Councilmember Wendy Morris, and Councilmember Victor Sanchez. Would you like to say anything at all? You don't have to. You don't think so? All right. This is for you. Let's get some, let's get some pictures. Okay, item ten is public comments. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. This is the time set aside for the public to address the city council on matters not listed on the agenda. Anyone wishing to address the city council should come to the podium, be recognized by the mayor, and state your name for the record. If you wish to address the city council on an agenda item, you may do so by approaching the podium as we review that particular item, and you'll be given three minutes to address the city council.
Thank you. Anybody in the audience wish to come forward and speak on something that is not on the agenda? This is the time. Come on up, sign in at the clipboard, your name, and they could ask for your address, and then state your name in the mic, and you can proceed.
Thank you, everyone. This is my first time attending one of the meetings in the City of Bellflower. I've been a resident for over twenty-five years in the city-
What's your name?
Jessica Tyler.
Go on.
I've been a resident of Bellflower for over twenty-five years. I am an onsite property manager, which I've been for over twenty years, in the city of Bellflower, Casa Monterrey Apartments. I was invited to this meeting this evening because I was leaving my, my residence. There was a homeless, homeless gentleman that's been on my street for several, several months, and I saw the sheriff, Mr. Ottega, approach him, and was trying to speak with him, and tried to advise him to get some help. But that is not the solution with any of these homeless people in the city of Bellflower. We've called the sheriff out so many times, but their hands are tied. You cannot force these people into any type of rehab or anything like that. And this seems to be a major, major problem in the city of Bellflower. They're everywhere.
You're absolutely right, through the whole state, not just Bellflower.
And I know the police only do so much, but I commend them because I think they're doing a very great job. The other thing is our streets in the city of Bellflower. I live on Ramona Street. On Tuesdays, both sides of the street, the streets should be swept, and all the tenants are moving their cars back and forth everywhere. And we go out, the streets aren't clean. What are they doing? The streets aren't cleaned. They're not. When it rains, we have gutters on the street on both sides, up and down all the streets in Bellflower. Who's cleaning the gutters? We have to buy a sub pump to put in our driveway to keep the water from rising, so the tenants cannot get out. None of these things are really being done, and I pay attention to everything that's going on. I'm in every different city. I go to Whittier, Cerritos, Bellflower, Compton. I go around and see what's going on in different cities. Years ago, I spoke to the sheriff department, and I informed them. Bellflower is a great place to live. I'm very proud to live here. It hasn't gotten out of control yet. We don't have a lot of mom and pop stores on every corner, and I'm very grateful for that. Now, what is going to be done about some of the problems that we're having in the city of Bellflower? Who should I address? So, so we get a lot of the apartment managers together, have a meeting, come to the city, your city meetings and see what we can get done?
Would you like me to steer you to someone to, that you can have that conversation with?
Yes, that would be great.
Okay. Our, uh, Brian McNerney is our Public Safety Director. He is in the audience just right off your left shoulder, and he will come and introduce himself-
Okay, thank you very much.
-and talk to you what you can do about some of that stuff. Anyone else wishing to come forward?
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Joaquin Wong. I'm a resident of Bellflower, and I'm also the director for P N P T, which is a Panamanian cultural group. We've been performing and organizing cultural events since two thousand nineteen, and I would love to have the opportunity to connect with the community and help in any way we can. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Wong. Anyone else want to come forward?
Good evening, everybody. My name is J D Dezon. I've been a resident here in Bellflower on and off, just back now in two thousand twenty-three, and I was here since two thousand, actually nineteen ninety-eight, perhaps. And what really got me excited about the city of Bellflower, and I'm very happy that you guys considered an arts district here. So, with that said, I did speak to Elizabeth Oba, and she's the planning committee, and I would like to participate in a voluntary fashion at the moment, since, again, I've graduated with Cal State University of Long Beach with a Bachelors of Fine Arts. So, I'm here to kind of help out and revitalize the city, and I have very good ideas I think the city needs. You don't have one currently. So, with that said, again, my name is J D Dezon, and I'll just work with Elizabeth for that, and thank you again for thinking about the survey, and I hope we get some good responses.
You've already contacted Elizabeth?
Yes, I have.
Okay, got it. Okay, so you got her number. Well, thanks for coming out.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Did you want to add anything? Did you want to?
I just want to make sure that Elizabeth has the contact information.
Yeah, they're already talked.
All right, good. Thank you.
All right, next.
Hello, good evening.
Hi.
I'm Luis Carranza.
What's your name?
Luis Carranza.
Luis, okay.
Yeah, I'm here to represent our nonprofit, Money Matters. We do events for the kids from ages five to eighteen, educating them on financial literacy and entrepreneurship. Our offices are literally located right here in front of the library, and we are hosting an event on the twenty-fifth of this month. That will be for mothers and daughters only, but if they do have the kid, the boys, bring them on in. I'll be in the other side of the office with the boys.
Okay.
And-
That's Money Matters.
Money Matters, yes.
Good subject.
And I also have a calendar right here for the rest of the events for the rest-
What are the age groups for the kids?
Ages five to eighteen.
Nice.
Thank you.
No kid too old. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing any. We'll move on. Okay. Move on to item thirteen A. Mr. Smoot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Beth and our building official, Alan, are coming up, and they're going to kick off this presentation for you.
Okay, good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. So, the item tonight is to provide a brief update on our building division and how they've been doing over the last five months since the transition. So, just to go back to provide the public and the council a history of the building and safety contract services. Since the city incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven until nineteen ninety-seven, the city's building and safety services were provided by Los Angeles County. To provide better customer service at reduced cost, the city approved a transition to a combination of both in-house staff and contracted staff in nineteen ninety-seven. And since nineteen ninety-seven, there've been various service providers providing our building and safety services, and that includes trans-tech engineers from nineteen ninety-seven to two thousand, P and D consultants from two thousand to two thousand six, broad spec from two thousand six to two thousand, two thousand twenty, and Safe Built from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-four. It's also important to note that beginning in nineteen, uh, excuse me, beginning in two thousand nineteen, the service provider also provided fire code review and inspection services. The city began to receive complaints regarding the timing and comments received through its plan check process. After several meetings with the past service provider, starting in early two thousand twenty-four, the city released an RFP for building and safety services for several reasons. One of the reasons included that the personnel changes at the time with that service provider impacted the level of service to the city and the effectiveness, and it impacted the effectiveness and consistency within the division. It should also be noted that the city had ongoing efforts to streamline, improve, and modernize its service citywide, and that also included the building and safety operations. On September ninth, two thousand twenty-four, the city council awarded an agreement to Willdan Engineering. The city terminated its contract with State Built on September twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-four, and Willdan began operations on September twenty-ninth, two thousand twenty-four. So, our current and new service provider is Willdan Engineering. At the start of the contract, they were tasked with assessing the current operations, identifying areas for improvement, and making the necessary changes to have an efficient, effective, and well-functioning building and safety division. The next slides detail the assessments that were made, the changes that have occurred, and changes that will be made as recommended by our building official. Uh, this slide shows our, or represents our front counter activity and staffing. At the commencement of this contract, we had one full-time building official, one full-time and one part-time planner, one full-time building inspector, and two full-time permit technicians. After reviewing the caseload that the building department had, and also to continue to meet their service needs, the building official made several changes with its staffing. So, the other column represents the staffing that we have now. We still have a full-time building official. Our plan checkers are being provided by two part-time plan checkers with additional help provided by a full-time person that has a multi-use role. So, we have two part-time plan checkers, and they are plan check engineers, again, with additional help being provided by a person that provides multiple services to the city. So, the person that provides multiple services to the city, they do plan checking, building inspections, and also help with administrative needs, and that person is a one full-time position. Previously, they were a full-time plan checker. Our building inspector does have additional help, again, with that same person that functions as the multipurpose use role, or in the multipurpose use role. And then from our permit technicians, and this one's really important, they are our first line of contact at the city and at the front counter. They are responsible for administering the plan check process and making sure that they get part, uh, comments back from several departments. They issue permits. They answer general questions at the counter, and they generally try to help people along in the permit and plan check process. So, because our counter had just an uptake of plans that came in, we did change this from two full-time permit technicians to three full-time permit technicians. After reviewing the plan check and permitting process, the building official noted some changes that should be made with our self-certification process. So, for some background on self-certification, this program was established in two thousand sixteen, and it was to streamline the permitting processing by expediting construction approvals, to improve customer service delivery, and to encourage economic development. The program allows for a design professional to accept the risk associated with proceeding to construction. Any noted deficiencies are identified during the required inspections, and if necessary, the project is stopped until corrections are made. Bellflower is one of the first cities in California to make a self-certification process available as an option to residents and developers, and recently, the city has received attention for our longstanding efforts to expedite construction with our self-certification process. So, we have been getting several phone calls from other jurisdictions looking to implement a very similar process. And moving on to the changes that are being recommended, we have, you know, after review of our self-certifications, we have noticed that self-certification is rarely used. In two thousand twenty-four, we had approximately eleven applications. Prior to that, we had approximately fourteen, but they have steadily gone down since two thousand twenty. We did notice that self-certification is mostly used for small residential projects, including ADUs or residential additions, and also smaller commercial projects. We rarely, if ever, see them for a large, multi-use construction project that involves multiple stories or that have different occupancies. To facilitate and encourage more use of the program, and to avoid costly and untimely delays related to more complicated inspections, the focus that the building official recommends that this program be aimed for is for residential projects that consist of one-story and two-story residential, residential additions and ADUs, also commercial projects, including single-story commercial buildings. For all other projects, like those mentioned before, like the mixed-use project and the multi-story projects, those will be reviewed by the building official on a case-by-case basis. To identify any code deficiencies and for inspection purposes, the building official will maintain the authority to review, or sorry, will maintain the ability to require any necessary plan checks be conducted. A courtesy correction list will be provided to the inspector to ensure compliance with the building code during the inspection process. So, how this looks like is when somebody wants to submit a self-certification plan, they would submit it. Our building official and his team would do a cursory review of it as a courtesy to the licensed design professional. They will provide that document to the licensed design professional, and the licensed design professional can choose to either move forward with the plans as presented, or to modify the plans to address those corrections. More importantly, if the design professional decides to continue as is and move on without addressing those corrections, that list is provided to the inspector to ensure that in the field, the project complies with the building code. To memorialize this, a resolution will be brought back to the council for consideration at a future date. The building official also identified inconsistency with the city's requirements for the submission of a soils report for various projects. So, as the council is aware, and for the benefit of the public, Bellflower is located within a high liquefaction area. Generally, most projects require soils report, and they are prepared for, or prepared by, and are the professional work product of a geotechnical engineer. In this soils report, it describes what standards need to be included in the foundation plan to make sure that the building is safe. Soils can-
Elizabeth, uh, can you interrupt? For the benefit of the public, can you explain what liquefaction is?
Liqufaction is a, how do you say this? It's, it's a high water level within the soil of a project. So, because there's such a high water level, the foundation has to be designed so that it accounts for that high water level, to make sure that there is a sturdy foundation. My building official can correct me if I'm- And it should be noted that soils conditions are site-specific. It may change throughout the block. So what may be applicable from one side of the street may not be the same case across the street. To provide more clarity and flexibility for applicants and to reduce building costs and expedite lower risk. For projects where possible, the building official will develop prescriptive design standards. Uh, so what that means is that the building official recommends that a prescriptive design standard be used for projects consisting of one-story structures, seven hundred square feet or less, for which foundation plans conform to this prescriptive design standards. If the project per conforms to those standards, then no soils report would be required. And then for projects consisting of one-story structures or for projects consisting of one-story structures that exceed the seven fifty or are multiple stories, they must provide a site-specific soils report and the foundation plan must be in accordance with the recommendations outlined in the soils report. Okay, moving on to the next topic. Staff has received complaints related to inconsistent, inconsistent submittal requirements for plan checks. These complaints relate to the requirements for particular documents that may not have been required for a similar project in the past. A couple of examples for this are grading plan reviews and for fire flow form certifications. Um, what we're seeing is that um, for people that have done a lot of work in the city, we're finding that the requirements for grading and fire floor forms now may not have been the case before. Um, also, we are there's also been a change in the number of plan sets that were required uh, for submission. And so we get a lot of these complaints, like, you know, the previous, you know, people that were here did not require these things. And for whatever reason, you know, they did not have to provide it. To be more consistent, we are trying to come up with a standard checklist that identifies what needs to be submitted so it's clear to the applicant and the developer at plant submittal, what should be submitted in the first round. Um, this also includes a list of all outside agencies that would be applicable. For example, for certain projects, it requires health department approval or AQMD approval. Uh, this list would also include those different approvals so that um, it's clear to the applicants when they submit a plan, what would be required. The building official has already created these handouts and they will be made available following, following this meeting. In relation to online plan check and online permitting, we've been talking about this for, you know, at least a year or so. Uh, we are looking to modernize and, you know, update our software. We have a really old version um, of our permitting software. Uh, what, so when Willdan was awarded the contract, uh, they did have an online plan checking portal. So what this means is a developer could submit their plans electronically. They wouldn't have to print several sets out. They could submit through their online plan checking portal. And what we found is with Willdan's online pla- plan checking portal, it's a really great tool and a benefit to the city. But it also highlights some deficiencies in our internal review, in our internal city reviews. Um, so for example, our planning and public works uh, development or departmental reviews, they also need to be modernized um, with Willdan's process. Oh, this also includes our finance procedures as well. So currently, in order for um, somebody to pay fees, they would either have to mail a check in or to come in person to pay. Um, rarely do we accept for electronic payment, but with Willdan providing this electronic plan checking portal, it does highlight the city's needs to modernize as well. We are currently in negotiations with two companies. Uh, one that provides for online permitting and one that provides for online plan checking. And those would also incorporate the city's review. So we are looking at getting software that would encompass every single city review into one software system. And like I mentioned, improvements to the payment process with the finance department will also be integrated into this, this new plan checking software. Building and planning staff consistently receive complaints related to the city's permit and fee structure. The plan check and permit fees are collected together as one single fee at the time of plan check submittal. Uh, this presents some challenges from an accounting standpoint in that there could be a project that goes through plan check, pays the fee for plan check and permits, but decides not to move forward with the project and no inspections are done. Um, this becomes challenging from an, an accounting standpoint because we have to determine how much needs to be refunded due to the fact that inspections haven't been conducted. That's, that's just one example. Um, staff will be working on revising our fee structure so that the plan check fee is separate than the permit fee and then also reviewing that structure to make sure that we are ensuring appropriate cost recovery. Another complaint that we constantly receive at the counter is in relation to our development impact fees. Generally, the complaint that we receive are that the fees, the impact fees are too high compared to our surrounding cities and they deter development. Um, it should be noted that the city's development impact fees are designed to defray the cost and impacts of development on the surrounding community and ensure the city's ability to provide the associated services and infrastructure necessary to support that development. With the transition of the building division services, the city charged the building official with identifying beneficial improvements to our processes and practices to improve the applicant experience. Based on that review, the building, the building official has begun to make the necessary changes and has worked with city staff to bring amendments requiring city council approval. Um, those include the fee adjustments, a resolution clarifying the self-certification program, and other items will be brought back to the city council in the near future for consideration. So the recommendation this evening is to receive and file this report or alternatively discuss and take other action related to this item. And I'm available for any questions if you have any and so is our building official who's sitting next to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Any, who wants to go first, any questions? Go ahead, Ms. Morris.
How far do you think we are away from getting the software for the plan checking?
So we are looking at a brand-new software company that has to build the software from scratch. Um, right now, we're still in contract negotiations. Um, we've been going back and forth in terms of the contract, but even if we get that squared away, the build of the software uh, takes approximately nine months. So once we get that contract locked in, in nine months, the um, software will be built so we can start implementation.
Councilman Morris, if I might add to that. This is one small piece of the charge you've charged myself and my staff with of reviewing our overall city operations and how we do things in Bellflower. This is one small piece of that. And when we talk about a uh, online plan check or a plan review software, obviously that plays into everything else that we do. Beth mentioned finance as an example. Um, we've talked a lot, we'll talk a lot about in your next item about staffing capacity and the ability of our staff to take on some of those new things and those new challenges. Uh, this plays directly into that. Some of those things are difficult to put in place when our staff are running around um, like a chicken with their head cut off, trying to do nineteen other things uh, without the ability to focus on some of this. So this will take a little bit of time, but um, a lot of the proposals you see tonight and the ones coming forward over the next few months now and through your budget, budget process are directly related to making these things possible.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth.
I'd like to piggyback on that because I just heard something. You said the building software from scratch? But isn't this, there's other companies out there that other cities have use software. Is it a template model that's customized to us?
That is correct. So when I talk about building software, yeah. When I talk about building this software, it's really building the workflow and that varies throughout different cities, but it's really building the workflow that best suits our needs.
I understand that then. Anybody else on that topic?
Yeah.
Yeah, so may I piggyback off of that question?
Okay. Did you want to go first?
Go ahead, go ahead. I was under the impression that Willdan already had a system that we could plug and play. Um, and I believe they do have that system that we can plug and play. So is it that we need to hire additional consultants to help facilitate this transition? How can we expedite this a little bit more? Nine months seems a little far out.
So Willdan does have the electronic planning, uh, plan checking portal. The theme with them is that it's for their services. So it's for their plan checkers and also for their fire plan checkers. Um, that's where their portal is. The challenges is with the inner departmental reviews, which is really our public works and planning. Um, because we don't have our own software, we're not equipped to do electronic plan checking. So for planning and public works, we often get a hard copy set of plans and have to either respond in writing, whether it is a typed-up correction list or a handwritten correction list. That's our internal reviews. So Willdan stu- still does have the capacity to take in electronic plans, but it becomes challenging when those plans also need to be routed to either planning or public works.
So to follow on that, do you anticipate, do you anticipate then having two systems that have to integrate with each other?
Oh, there we go. Hey, hello, everybody. So uh, Councilman Sanchez, to, to clarify, GeoCivics is something that anybody could acquire. We run GeoCivics and we run Bluebeam, two separate programs, okay? But GeoCivics is how everything transfers back and forth. The city of Bellflower could uh, create or acquire a Geo, GeoCivics uh, uh, account. Uh, the engineering, you know, uh, Lori could get a GeoCivics and we could import it and they could all have access to it. It's really, that, that is doable for, for you. The problem relies in is now they don't have the big computer screens it takes to review, okay? So I come a land of paper and I also do electronic review. Well, at home, I have two big, huge screens that are the size of plans and I can move them around. When you're not used to doing electronic plan check, there is a kind of a, 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 a point of where you've got to get used to it. And the monitors that they have right now are very questionable whether or not they can get comfortable quick to that. So that's one part of it. The other part of it really comes down to what uh, uh, Mr. Smoot brought up is, okay, so we can bring it in and we can possibly distribute it. Now, how do we charge? How do we do all this? We're not supposed to be reviewing unless we've acquired, unless the city has acquired a fee for that. So there's some backend, which he's meaning which are, you know, which have to get taken care of, the infrastructure that you need. But can the, the switch be flicked? Oh, absolutely. But that's the problem.
And I would add one more thing. Uh, and that's that Beth hit it, hit the nail on the head. Part of this involves improving our workflow and process. If they were designing a software based on a flawed workflow, that software is not going to work for anyone, the applicants or us. So uh, we have the internal work to do, some of which is uh, what Alan and his team have identified. Just creating a simple checklist so, so applicants know exactly what it is they need to bring into, into us on a first submittal and then making sure that that's consistent across the board. Making sure that workflow is smooth as it's operating now so that when we create the new system, it, it transitions very easily, so we don't have to recreate it later. That, that will take us a little bit of time, but it's already moving.
And to answer your other question, it's not too separate. Once you create your operating system, GeoCivics will drop right into it. Bluebeam will drop. We, that's what it's designed to do. So whatever you choose, we're going to work with it just fine, not a problem.
So, uh, so following up on the discussion, uh, just to clarify my understanding on this issue. Um, so the, the planning software is going to be like, like a module, for lack of a better word. And then we'll be acquiring other modules like finance, the fire, plan check, and then also the, um, the public works portion. So these will all be integrated, talking to one, to one system.
That's correct, Mayor Protes, Santinas, that is correct. So that is essentially the software that we are seeking is that all departments, including our building department, including our planning, public works, finance, have this one system that has a workflow that allows somebody to be able to submit their plan checks electronically and from home so that they would not have to come to the counter, you know, and drive several miles in sitting traffic to come submit in person. Uh, the whole, the whole purpose is to basically have one centralized permitting system that can communicate with all departments and it makes it easier to track the projects.
So, but you will not be writing or the consultant will not be writing a system from scratch. Basically, it's just modifying an existing system to kind of um, tailor-made to our needs, basically.
That's correct.
So that um, the integration can be done a lot easier with the other modules.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, have you, um, Alan, have you migrated your system to another system similar to what we may be looking into?
Yes, yeah.
Any problems with migration?
We can, yes. There isn't, there, there's basically about seven providers that create these different systems. We integrate with all of those, that's non-issue.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Yeah, and just for clarity, we are still able to accept electronic plan checking now. Um, so I know that when we awarded the contract to Willdan, one of the highlights was that they have this electronic plan checking portal. We are still able to do that now. It's just that it's more challenging on the internal aspect um, in terms of our workflow between public works and planning that it would make it so much easier if we just had this one system. So again, we still have the ability to do, to do electronic plan checking. Um, and we are looking to go the next step, which is to streamline it into one program.
That makes sense to me, so. Anne, you good?
I've got a question.
That's our IT guy over there.
Yeah. We're with an abacus. My question, Beth, is when, it sounds like it's inevitable that we have this improved version and try to be able to do electronic plan check. It sounds like we're behind the eight ball, we need to get on the right page. Will this increase the amount of staff we need, decrease, or be the same?
Want me to speak on that? Because I've done it.
Okay.
So what it does is initially, it does increase a bit. So one of the reasons we have three permit techs, not that we're just buried, but we're getting prepped for this change, okay? Because it's going to take, it's going to take three because one permit tech alone is going to be immersed in this transition and then train everybody else. So how this, how this works is at some point in time, we reach a threshold where the counter drops down, okay? But it doesn't necessarily not eliminate work. What it does, it makes things go faster, which in some ways creates actually even more work, if you get my, my feeling for people because it's moving so fast now. And, and so that's what happens. We, we start getting um, more plans in and they move faster, okay? And then therefore, more work is actually created. A simple example is Chick-fil-A. Chick-fil-A was done all electronic. We made it happen. We only had one sheet for, I believe, for public works and maybe planning. I think we had one role for them. But otherwise, engineering, everything, fire was all done. And then in the end, how this works is once everybody approved, Chick-fil-A brought three sets to us printed from us, already stamped, already ready to go. So, including engineering. Uh, and they came to the counter, they brought And they came to the counter, they brought them to us. I stamped them, signed them, planning signed them, done, gone. Instead of this whole long type of thing and so many sets of plans going back and forth. So does that answer your question or not?
No, it makes sense. So we're offering a better service to those that want to build in Bellflower. That's the bottom line.
Absolutely. Without question.
But we're going to incur more employees and we're going to be on the hook for whatever it is we develop our system to be. Does that sound right?
Yeah.
I mean, this isn't for free.
That's clear.
Right.
That's clear.
Now, you're turning plans around in five days, aren't you?
Ten.
Ten, which is pretty darn good. And you're going to be able to do it in less time than that.
Yeah, except on big projects.
Which always cost.
Yeah, but no, it, it, but on big projects, it'll still go fast because it can be disseminated to so many, not just one plan in, in, plan check engineer, three, all of them, you know, structural, architectural.
They'll all be able to work with it.
All at the same time.
So we just bought a bunch of computers this past year. Is what we're suggesting now compatible to what we purchased last year? In terms of hardware? Or do we have to reinvest again?
No, I would, I would say this. Your, the hardware, much of the hardware that we've purchased is perfectly sufficient. Specific individuals may need, you know, a larger monitor like.
A lot of that. That's what made, brought the question up. Sounds like you got a special monitor. It's like television.
Well, I do.
Yeah, but wouldn't that be necessary to have it?
Some people in planning will need bigger monitors. We're going to be fine on our end. But some people in planning, and I can't speak for public works, I don't know what they look at all the time, so.
Those are relatively.
Big monitor. Big.
What we have just purchased is still going to be, by and large, compatible to what we're trying to suggest now.
Yeah, and Sergio, as he presented to you all a number of months ago, has a whole, you know, basically rotation plan for all of our IT hardware and softwares to keep all of that up to date, so.
So here's a real shot in the dark. Have you any idea what this might cost?
Cost wise?
Cost wise, if we buy this system, develop it as necessary, and then I'm sure we're going to have a maintenance every month, we got to be working with it. What are we biting off here?
Yes.
Yes.
We do have, and that was part of the negotiation process. I mean, we looked at three different software companies and got quoted from each of them. So we do have that cost. It's going to be in, actually, it's already budgeted this year. And in the next budget cycle, they'll also be funding for it, too.
And the amount is?
The first year cost, I believe, is close to a hundred and... I think it's close to a hundred and sixty thousand. And then the ongoing recurring cost is about... It's between seventy and eighty.
So each year to?
Each year.
To keep it in check.
So the first year, the cost is high because they are building the workflows. And then to maintain the services, it just drops down from there. And I will say, it's also cloud-based, so you can access it anywhere. So it's not like it's on a hard drive within the city server.
Okay. Well, those are the questions I had and thank you for your answers. Did you learn anything from my being so naive here?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions.
Go ahead, Mr. Sanchez. Sorry.
So, but can you turn the slide to the soils report section? Thank you for explaining what a liquid faction is and what a soils report does and how important it is to the construction phase. My question to you, can you go to the recommendation section? On the projects, the designation on the one-story, the structure, the 750 square feet, on those numbers right there. Do you have any reference to what other cities around us are doing?
I know that it's either the city or the county of LA. They use a prescriptive design method for square feet, for square footage of 500 square feet or less.
And when you said prescriptive method, what does that mean?
It is a standard design for the foundation. So, and it's, how do you say this? It's more elevated than just your basic.
Uniform building code?
Yes, it's.
Well, it is, it is part of the uniform building code, but it is actually not in the CRC. It's a hybrid between the CRC and the CBC, the building code. The handout that we're putting, the handouts we're putting up is going to clearly show it. So somebody's going to actually have it. So when we put these handouts up tomorrow, it refers right to it, the soils report, what your options are. It's very clear. And it actually shows the actual depth, the size, the requirement for the concrete cement pour and the requirement for the steel. Makes it very simple.
That was where I was going.
Yeah, very, very, very simple. And the, and when she's, and when you're talking about other city, everybody else is at like 500 square feet. LA County, Downey, Norwalk, pretty much everybody's at 500. And, and what I believe is if we were to do this today, and this happened in the 90s when this started, if we were to do this today, the number would be 750 because of ADUs, because of the current construction. And so I chose to make that, that the line, not 500.
Regarding prescriptive methods of design, do you ever foresee that in the future, because I know some cities already have this, they have a full-on set of plans already, from scratch all the way from, basically from grading all the way to finish?
For an ADU?
For an ADU, for a junior ADU.
Yeah.
That literally could be pulled by any resident.
Actually, many cities are, actually, all cities are supposed to have it. Not everybody has complied in any way, shape, or form. But you're supposed to be able to provide a set of plans that can immediately go through without any problem at all. But they do not omit a soils report. They're, they're, they're a basic, here's, here's your choice, three different, four different floor plans you could have for an ADU or for an SB9. And by state law, at a certain point in time, every city is supposed to be able to provide that for their constituents.
And when is that deadline?
Off the top of my head, I do not know, but I could get that for you.
Yeah, please, please.
But off the top of my head, I don't, I don't have it. I know that we are in the process of working on that, that much I know.
Well, I think the prescriptive method and what you were recommending, I think at this point in time is a very good approach to addressing some of the, the needs for our residents as they're building. Gives some flexibility and I like the idea that we're working on a prescriptive method for a full design. There are people that would like to build, but obviously either don't know how to start or where to go or the cost to just hire architects and go forth is, you know, a barrier. So I think that that is an important phase for us. So I'm looking forward to hearing when that comes back. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sanchez. Mayor Mayor Protim Santinas.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to thank you, Elizabeth and Alan, for looking into the operations of the safety and building department, planning building department, and identifying weaknesses and finding solutions for it. In terms of the liquid faction, I just want to let the public know in terms of what Elizabeth said earlier, that Bellflower is in a high liquid faction area. A classic example is the fire museum and the parking structure, just 80 feet apart. The liquid faction factor for the parking structure is six times more than the fire museum. That's why, if you recall, the city spent over $1 million for the concrete piers to reinforce before building the parking structure itself. So that's how differences in liquid faction factor is within the city of Bellflower. Just across the, across Bellflower Boulevard, it was different on the west side versus the east side. Elizabeth, can you show again the staffing slide? Okay. So, question here is, so permit technician, three full-time staff. I know council member Coops asked the question, if you have enough staffing for today. In terms of the number of plan checks, permits received, let's say, comparing 2023 versus 2024, what percentage do you think it, the number increased?
Between 2023 and 2024.
Mm-hmm. Roughly. I just thought about the question.
I would probably, I do have those numbers, but in terms of percentage, I would probably estimate maybe 10%.
10% more than the previous year?
Correct. From 2023 to 2024. We are seeing a slight uptick in construction plans, most notably with ADU plans.
Okay, okay. And you expect more coming out this year?
Correct. And as the council knows and for the benefit of the public, the state is more and more removing local control and also making it easier for a homeowner to build multiple ADUs. So I think that is why we're seeing that uptick in ADUs, is that, number one, you could have more ADUs than before and number two, the state's making it a lot easier for residents or homeowners to build another unit on their property.
Okay, but in terms of the cost, the permit fee, the plan check and permit fees, it's based on cost recovery, recover the cost of being incurred by the city. So nothing is coming out of tax dollars, basically. That's the concept, right?
Correct.
Okay, so that will continue. So we can always scale up or scale down depending on the volume of permits or applications being processed? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the department is able to kind of flex along that lines?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, and what we did see too is that, you know, with, before, if you look at our plan checker, we had one full-time plan checker and one part-time plan checker.
Right.
That one full-time plan checker, we realized that we can better use his skills because he's also a sort of a building inspector. So instead of just having him do plan checks, we are utilizing him to do plan checks, inspections, and also to help as an administrative assistant. Then we brought on a part-time plan check engineer to help fill that role, too. So I will say that with Will Dan staffing, a lot of them have multiple certifications to be able to do multiple duties such as plan checking or inspections.
Years ago, one of the complaints I've been getting, I was getting was that inspection is kind of delayed. They have to, they have to schedule it. How's the inspection scheduled these days?
For the, for the inspections, we're averaging about 22 inspections a day. We did make some adjustments to the time of the inspections. We did move the inspections earlier. So I think before, they used to start at nine. Now they're starting as early as eight, mostly 8:30. But we are starting the inspections earlier. In addition, we do have additional help. So instead of just that one inspector, we have that person that's in that multi-use role that can do plan checks in the morning and inspections after, in the afternoon. And we also have our building official who's very knowledgeable and can also do inspections.
So you can say that the inspection is being done on a timely basis these days?
I would say so, yes. We still have the range between, you know, we still split it between AM and PMs. You know, AM inspections and PM inspections, but we are fulfilling the inspections, yes.
Okay, okay, great. Okay, thank you so much. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Coops?
Yes, I think for the viewing public, we just talking ADUs and JADUs. Can you please define for those that are watching and hearing the audience what an ADU is? We just freely use that phrase as we think everyone knows what it is.
It stands for accessory dwelling units. And I will say that in the past, the terminology was like mother-in-law corners or granny flats. That was some of the terminology before, but it's now defined as an accessory dwelling unit.
And that can be placed in what kind of setting?
Several settings. Our most common one is if you have a single-family home on a single-family lot, you're able to have another detached home, such as an ADU, or another attached home, which is an ADU. In multiple residential projects, you could have multiple detached ADUs or you can have space within an existing building and convert it to an ADU.
And these are for rent only? They're not to be owned but by the property owner that is in, the original property owner, correct?
They are mostly for rent. There, there is some laws that do allow for the sale of ADUs, but we rarely see that in the city.
Does that require a lot split and everything else?
It would not necessarily require a lot split, no. But we mostly see them here as rentals.
And define a JADU versus an ADU?
A JADU stands for Junior Accessory Dwelling Unit. And essentially, it's a smaller version of an ADU. It's limited to 500 square feet or less. And it has to be within the existing footprint of the existing single-family home. So for example, if you had a den in a single-family home and it was not used, you can convert that to a JADU. Or let's say you had a sunroom as part of your home, you could convert that to a JADU. But it has to be within the existing footprint of the existing building.
And what about parking? Can you use, if you have a garage that's ancillary to your existing unit, what are the parking requirements for the ADU?
Most projects are exempt from providing parking for ADUs. So for example, you could have an attached garage to your home and convert the garage to an ADU without having to provide replacement parking.
So you could have the original home not have any parking probability at all? And a secondary unit, same story?
Correct.
No parking requirements?
Correct.
Okay.
And that's all governed by the state.
That's the state of California talking. When you install and build additional units on what has been historically a single-family unit, how is it that the utilities, sewer, electric, and water service are provided for so that everyone still receives what their allocation would be?
So it depends on what size unit and what exactly is being created. So when it comes to utilities, okay, as far as electrical, separate panel is placed on an ADU if it is detached, okay? The issue comes more whether they're attached or detached and how the utilities work. And gas lines also, also the same. That's the same, it's whether it's attached or detached. If it's a junior ADU and it's a part of the structure existing, there's, it, it, its utilities are still there and you can't really assess that. But if it is detached or it's a detached garage, now it can have its own individual utilities and that, that it, that it does. Now, you can have a separate main panel from a, from the home to the ADU, okay? That, that can happen, but it's a separate utility. Power is brought into one, sent to the other. The same thing with the underground sewer. There are times where that does impact public works and public works has to address that and address the driveway and apron as such. It just depends.
So do we have the capability to provide utilities for an additional unit in the backyard when initially it was set up for a single-family residence?
Yes, it can be done. It's sometimes creative and sometimes it's a chore. That's something to the investigation of the process of, of building your ADU. But nine times out of 10, that's not an issue.
And Councilmember Coops, I would add this. With exceptions, obviously, in certain circumstances, the state prohibits us from assessing development impact fees. But the city council adopts development impact fees for certain projects, ADUs are sometimes an exception, to assess some of the impacts, not necessarily utilities, but for example, you have a parks facility fee. Any new development in the city comes with new families, new children that need places to play. You all have adopted impact fees to offset some of those impacts so that the development project is ostensibly handling the impacts of that development on the community and the community is not bearing those costs on behalf of the developer. So.
But ADUs are immune from that.
Depending on the size of the ADU, they could be immune. But if they're larger, sometimes they're not.
I just thought, you know, a lot of these questions, I know the answer to, but I thought it would be good for the public to understand and know what it is we're discussing here. Because that's basically, as Elizabeth has indicated, the permits are primarily being pulled for auxiliary dwelling units. And what are they and how do they impact our city? Thank you.
Okay. You good down there? No, you're good. Okay. All right. I forget, did we go through the whole?
Do you want to hear from the public?
ADUs and IT. That's what I know. Liquid, liquid faction, yeah. Liquid faction is because of our high water table. Okay. Recommendations now. Yeah. Receive and follow. Anybody want to?
Do you want the public to give any input?
Yeah. Anybody in the audience want to throw their two cents in at the podium? Hey, Fred?
Good evening. My name is Fred Taylor, and I just had a question about a word on one of the screens, the self-accreditation screen. Self, yeah, thank you. Self-certification, yes. And uh okay, I pretty much she read all those verbatim. And when she was reading the next to last paragraph, I thought she said the cursory review. And that's just courtesy review. So that's all. I just didn't seem to, you guys, a lot of times, you know, you go, oh, that word needs to be changed. And so I kind of saw it fly by, and evidently I did hear it correctly, and I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you, Fred.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody like to uh? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to receive and file the report.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, motion on the floor by Mayor Protem Sunny Santinas, and a second to uh from Councilmember Coops for receive and file. Call roll, please.
Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Dutton?
Aye.
Okay. We're gonna have change under the guard here a minute and and I saw, right, there's Ryder. You're back just in time. But changing of the guard is gonna take, look at all those notebooks. Give you a little minute to set up. You all ready to go? Jeez. All right, uh go ahead and read.
Uh item thirteen B is a is a review and potential consideration of your strategic planning report. Obviously, you've been through a process here for um a couple of months now to yes, to conduct a strategic planning process and come out with some recommendations and some uh some work tasks for my staff. Uh so I'm gonna let Ryder go into some of that background, and then I'll jump in, and we'll go back and forth.
This'll be fun.
Great. Thank you very much, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. It's a pleasure to be here with you tonight. I don't usually get to sit at the staff table. This feels pretty fancy.
Yeah.
It's always welcome here in Bellflower.
You've earned it, Ryder.
Thank you, sir.
I hope your audio video guys are got you covered.
I told him, I told him, give me a soft light tonight. A slight civil shepherd effect, Daniel. If you if you hear that, please take care of it. Um well, thank you very much. I really appreciate the opportunity to get to work with you all. Uh it's been over a decade we've had the chance to work with with the city, and I very much appreciate that. And this is our first chance to work with you on a strategic planning process, which we very much appreciated. Uh up on the screen here is a quick summary of the timeline that we had in this process, uh kicking off with a conversation with Ryan. Uh we did, uh we had an individual questionnaire to each council member to kind of get a sense of your concerns and policy areas, and then we did follow-up one-on-one meetings. Ultimately, that culminated in an open meeting workshop on the sixteenth of January, where we reviewed the various uh goals and items that have been raised through uh our conversations with you all. And then um we subsequently met with city staff uh on this uh in the month of February. And those meetings were to really take all the goals you had outlined in our workshop and put in the hands of your professional staff, the methods to achieve the aspirational goals you have for the community of Bellflower. And they were absolutely phenomenal work within that process, and um we gelled well with them to come up with those very specific goals that they had in mind. So it was uh excellent experience from our perspective, and here we are tonight to present this strategic plan. Uh just a friendly reminder about our current mission statement. We didn't subject this mission statement to review during this assessment or during this strategic planning process. We remain focused on implementing the mission as it stands today. And I'll hand it over to City Manager Smoot to discuss um some of the driving data of the FN3 research that helps supplement our um strategic planning process.
Yeah, so Ryder mentioned that he had gone back and forth with uh you all as to the priorities of the community. Fortunately, you all have a pretty good take on where your community is at. Um we also had uh Richard from Fairbank Maslin do uh one of our usual community surveys and ask some of the same similar questions. The reason we ask similar questions to what we've asked in the past is we can track those things over time. Most importantly, for this instance, though, and by the way, we took um for the sake of the public, uh in that open public meeting, we reviewed that whole survey data as a basis for the council's discussion. We've synthesized a little bit of it here to provide for the public. Some of the key findings out of that, uh as is pretty consistent in Bellflower, two-thirds of your residents view Bellflower favorably as a place to live, which is great news. We we love to hear that, uh that your residents like being here. They stay here, and they want to stay here. That's a great thing. Homelessness has been and continues to be one of the top issues facing our community. Importantly, I think with regard to homelessness, what was pretty clear throughout that survey was when we ask residents what one of their top priorities is, they say the number of homeless on the streets, and you'll see that in a second. When we talk to them about and their satisfaction with what's happening with homeless is the the difficulty is apparent from them. When we then talk to them about what the city council has done over the last few years in our efforts to address homelessness in Bellflower, their favorability of those efforts goes up significantly, uh which is tells us a couple of things. Number one, homelessness is obviously a priority for them, and number two, um we have some work to do on how we communicate out uh what's happening in the city. We are doing a lot of work. The council is spending significant amounts of money and doing a lot of work to address homelessness in Bellflower. But our residents aren't necessarily necessarily hearing that. That was readily apparent throughout the process. Um obviously, crime is a is always and public safety is always a priority for Bellflower. Um crime is on our residents' minds as well in various capacities. Um and I when I mentioned the the communications out from the city and and from our residents to us, uh that will become an important factor in this. Can you go to the next slide for me? Um so the specific data, there's a couple of slides here of priorities for residents. Obviously, the number of homeless in our streets continues to be number one priority, and I won't go through these line by line. Uh but these are the main priorities, and then the next slide, one more for me, is sort of your secondary priorities, that your residents specifically identified as what they would like to see us address. So with that, the next one for me as well. That was the basis for the discussion. That was a really brief overview, because you all have heard it before. If you want us to go into more detail with those, of course, we're happy to. But I say all of those things to say that the process we've gone through is not just the city council determining what needs to happen in the community. It's not just staff saying, we think this is what you should do. It's driven by the desires and the needs and the requests of your residents to set these goals and priorities. So I'm gonna kick it back to Ryder to go through these very specific uh goals that you all have set. And then if you have questions about the stuff that's in the report, of course, I and my staff are more than happy to answer any specific questions you have as far as the tasks in there.
Thank you very much, City Manager Smoot. So I want to second one other point that Ryan makes, which is, in the course of us doing strategic planning work, it is very rare. We have access to a scientifically valid survey to help inform some of the strategic planning work we're doing. And I very much consider a survey to be a form of community engagement, right? We were literally asking hundreds of residents what they think in a scientifically valid fashion. And the fact that the city council of Bellflower has consistently invested in a citizen survey to understand the public perceptions and concerns is just a further indication of both your interest and commitment to understanding and being responsive of public concerns, and it really puts us in a it's a huge advantage to have during a strategic planning process. So I just just want to express my appreciation that you invest in these surveys, because they are very helpful, and I think they served us well in terms of helping frame up some of the challenges and issues that um you all were prioritizing to address. So in the course of our work, um and your the staff report for the public's benefit, for your benefit, has the entirety of the strategic plan laid out in it as a draft document. Uh but roughly speaking, it identified these five core uh goal areas. And then within each of these, there were some specific goals or objectives to go tackle. And the task that was uh after we crafted this in our shared session workshop together was to go forth and identify specific activities that city staff could take to address the objectives area, objective areas that are under e- each of these five goals. I've left those details out of the PowerPoint for perhaps the obvious reasons that they're well documented in the staff report and didn't want to uh uh dwell on them too much tonight, but to um City Manager Smoot's point, we are happy to address any and all the questions that may come up out of those. Uh and none of these should be surprising, because pretty much, I think, verbatim, these are reflective of the concluding conversations we had the day of at the workshop. So it should be hopefully pretty consistent with what you've seen in the past. Uh with that, uh I'll turn it over to Ryan to discuss recommendations.
Sorry. Um so obviously, our recommendation uh this evening is, number one, receive this report, file this report, but more importantly, formally or informally, give us direction to uh carry these things out. Uh my staff has devoted a lot of time to uh adding in the specific tasks that we think drive towards the goals you all have set for us. So you should, presuming you adopt this this evening, this will be the basis for a lot of our upcoming conversations for the budget, and frankly, for your capital improvement plan and for many years to come. We'll be looking at this and reviewing this and turning back to it to say, does the council still have these priorities? And if so, what can we tick off this list and add back onto this list as the next thing we want to do? This is the driving force for a lot of the efforts of my staff going forward. So our recommendation is refuse, receive and file that report. Obviously, you can take any other action you so choose. If you do that, uh we are going to put a lot of effort into communicating communicating this out to the community as well, so they understand when we're adopting a budget, where it's coming from and why, uh and that it's driving back towards the priorities that ultimately they have set for us. So we're happy to answer any questions you have, and if we we have some of the details going forward, if you want to see those, but um we're happy to answer any questions you've got.
I was under the impression that what we had in the staff report that we got, that we were gonna have that as a presentation. I know it was like twelve or fifteen pages. I got that, so. You all good with that? You guys probably were surprised too, right? Yeah.
If you guys want, we're happy to pull it up.
Yeah.
Well, no, I didn't know whether, you know.
We just didn't want to go line by line and bore everybody.
Well, I know, that's, yeah, skim over it, but it was it was a lot. At least, you know, I saw you had the the four, and then there was five. There was.
Uh Mayor, if you'd like, I do have slides prepared with all the objectives underneath each one. If you'd like me to review those for the benefit of the public and yourselves for sake of discourse, I'm more than happy to engage or present that.
Because it's, yeah, because the audience, TV world, doesn't know it.
Absolutely.
Let's do it.
Okay.
They'll see, yeah, okay.
Great.
They didn't know I was the only one thinking that way.
That's very well. Um so uh
You can kind of breeze through it. It's, yes.
Understood. So goal number one was focused on uh enhance public safety, especially given some of the polling data and just given the general trend. Uh not to mention, most communities are always, that's kind of priority one for every uh community. So uh we're interested in strengthening our partnerships uh between the city and the county sheriff, our contracting agency for public for safety services, community, improving community education and transparency in relationship to our efforts, so that has to really speak with what we're doing, and frankly, how we can also help empower our residents to be involved in that process, which partly goes to one dot three, which is encouraging community awareness and reporting to help them be partners in addressing this, because at some point, you your your community can go a long way to being a partner in addressing crime issues in in your society. Um number a dot, one dot four was determining location, design, programming, and execution of a new public safety building, which uh is a major investment to be making. And then one dot five, finalizing and implementing of public safety assessment recommendations. There was a public safety assessment process that I believe you have just recently wrapped up, and uh you now have an opportunity to go forth and implement those. Uh continuing, and but public safety had the most enumerated objectives. Number six, uh building on the reputation through communication action that Bellflower is tougher on crime than peer cities. This city has a history of indicating its preference for being tough on crime. Um that's, you've been stalwart in that throughout the last decade and didn't waver, and um it's important that criminals understand that this is not a place you come to commit crime. Uh there's other communities that might be more welcoming. Seven, develop a list of community resources for addressing addiction-related challenges. Uh better engage with partnerships to offer spectrum of solutions for crime el- crime elements. Uh eight, let's set a direction, tap into Measure A funds to support programming that addresses homelessness and uh challenges in the city. Uh nine was uh aggressively work to address homeless population areas in the city, including spaces outside city jurisdictions to reduce homeless population in the city. So again, we're we we are engaging homelessness as part of our broader efforts with public safety. And then number ten was solidify emergency preparedness training among staff, uh ensure a degree of self-reliance after a disaster and communicate the plan. And this particularly surfaced because we were just in the shadow of the Palisades and Eaton fires. And like a number of communities, there's significant concern that um we're properly prepared for an incident. I don't think we view wild uh Bellflower as being in a significant wildfire risk area, but absolutely, if we had a major uh earthquake and you're in a liquefaction zone, right, you could have more problems than most, so um so that's a concern.
All right, Mayor, can I can I can I can I ask a question about that one point eight? I just kind of noticed that um one point is very focused on Measure A. Uh can we expand that to include other available funding sources like the state, the county that they may have, instead of just limiting our ability um to address homelessness challenges in this year using Measure A funds? Because there might be something coming from the state.
We do, and I think you'll find throughout the report that a lot of these sort of cross over one another. This is one of those. There's a another task in here of exploring um internal and external revenue sources to solve some of these challenges. I think we specifically mentioned, off the top of my head, without finding it in here, sales tax modernization, uh RUT, et cetera. Uh so we we have that kind of in other places, but not directly tied to this specific one. In fact, I'll see if I can find it for you if you like.
Yeah, but that's tax though. This is um grant funding, basically.
Uh I don't know that we were that specific in it, but let me see if I can find it. I mean, the the quick answer to your question is certainly you all are able.
If there's none, I think I'd like I'd like to add um state funding also.
Okay.
If there's any. Or additional additional sources.
Very well. I assume we have, I I sense consensus among the council, and that's easy easy enough edit.
Okay.
Well understood.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other, before I move on to goal number two?
Yeah, does anybody else have any questions with goal number one? Okay, proceed.
One question. I didn't see anything regarding traffic calming, and I noticed traffic calming is, oh, is that not under public safety?
It's under a different section, I believe.
Oh, that's right. It's under four, quality of life. That's right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, proceed.
Okay. So uh under goal number two, we had seven items. Um explore communication methods to reach multi-generational rate, multi-generations with focus on most effective methods. So this would be recognizing a diversity of communication tools to reach the public. Number two was exploring tools for connecting residents to each other and to the city. So it's not just about building a connection to the city with communication channels, but really trying to help our residents huddle up and better have better community cohesion through communications. Three, it was establishing communication channels to engage with small businesses. There was a real emphasis within council sentiment around making sure we're talking to our small businesses and how we're curating them in the community. Four, uh develop a strategy to leverage video, digital, and paper communications to balance reaching across the community. So I'd say in some ways, that harkens back to uh multi-generational communications above a number one, but particularly with an emphasis on the different mediums that are popular these days. Uh simply, especially since comms is near and dear to my heart, we know how complex it is to get a message out into the public. Number five was bring a unified, consistent, and strategically chosen voice and visual presence to communications across the eight channels. A lot of this has to do with consistency in branding, consistency in voice. What messages are we emphasizing? Just standard kind of branding process and advanced communication operations. Six, conduct a communication assessment on platforms, on the platforms and processes. And then number seven was to improve collaboration relationships with uh the school district.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I would note to the previous point, this is one of those ones that sort of crosses over everything that we do, to be honest, because um there's a lot of communications that we do around every aspect of what the city does, so uh this one crosses over a lot.
Go right ahead.
About the whole package. Um are we gonna publish the this slide or basically the one with tactical steps?
We will take the entire strategic planning final report that's in the staff report, uh and we will have that up on the website.
Okay.
And you all will see it repeatedly as well.
Mr. Mayor, if I may have a question or comment? On two point seven, Ryder, by the way, you're doing really great so far.
Momentum is my friend.
Two point seven. Um and I I heard Mr. Smoot say that uh there are other points throughout the the um the goals um that talk about communication and partnership and relationship building. Do we have anywhere in here um a focal point to strengthen relationships with NGOs and with uh churches? We have a lot of churches in the community.
Yes, there I would say there is, uh I think it was actually in the in the first goal, but there is um one of the things that came up through the council's discussions was bettering our connections to some of our service providers, specifically related to homeless interaction primarily, but it came up more broadly. I'm gonna use one example in the community Kingdom Causes or Little House. We've had conversations with them about how when we're providing these services, can we partner with some of these resources that are already available in the community and doing some of this work? How can we partner with them with them better than we do now to bring them in?
Right, and I saw that under public safety. Right, and I saw that under public safety and, and so more so do we need to make that an additional bulletin under, under public outreach and education and connection? Because they could, they can be a great partners in our efforts to communicate, to bridge the, the communication. I don't want to call it divide, but the, improve the communication channels, basically. That's all.
The answer is yes, we can. And the, you'll see it again in, when we talk about parks and rec programming, you'll see in some of that. A lot of the conversation revolved around programming specific to young families that we want to attract into Bellflower. Obviously, an excellent way to reach some of the young families is at school. The more we build those partnerships, the more we can communicate those.
I think particularly in that context, under this broader issue of just public education and outreach, it is that school vector. As I always like to remind my city friends, school districts hold the most precious asset in the house, which is the child. So a parent will happily give over every bit of information possible, but when the city comes asking, they're like, why? So that's such is the power of children. So I assume there's, is there consensus that making this clear that it's beyond just school districts as part of the communications?
Yeah.
Okay, very well. All right, I'll go to the next goal. So goal three was focused on continuing the, an investment in a high-performing and efficient team here at City Hall. You have to have a solid army to execute on the goals you have in front of you. So number one was improve communication and collaboration between departments. This is about cross-departmental collaboration. Two, investing in technology resources for staff. We hear tonight bigger monitors might be on order perhaps. Number three was modernize systems to support resident feedback. This is just coming up with different systems that would actually accommodate that more easily to make sure we're hearing from residents more directly and consistently. And that we're actually engaging with them and responding to them accordingly. Four is invest in training and career development for employees, speaks for itself. Five, conduct a self-full classification and compensation study. That's a very specific study and exercise that dives in a very deep detail way that, that I'm sure Mr. Smooth could explain more clearly. But suffice to say is, I think it's a further cut above than something that's been done in recent time here at the city. Six was build organizational capacity through staff hiring and strategic contracting for services that yield productivity enhancements. And this is really just recognizing that there are options when it comes to building out organizational capacity. Sometimes that's about adding people, sometimes it's about contracting for resources. That is a decision to be made on a case-by-case basis as the needs arise. Seven, modernize city policies that are ineffective or inefficient as currently written. And then number eight was implement procedures for fielding and following up on resident requests in a timely manner. A little bit connected to the number three, 3.3 above. But this in particular is focusing on some sort of ticketing system and having a real option to make sure we're doing timely follow-up with, with resident requests. So, any questions?
Number four three?
Okay. Number four, we are looking to improve quality of life and visual appeal of the city. So the city had recently completed a parks master plan, and now let's, the desire was to go implement, implement that. Number two was improve the quality of maintenance of public areas. Three, raising standards of private property maintenance requirements, such as commercial, multifamily, and single-family residential. There was no particular property type that was identified, it was all property types to make sure we're, we're adhering to requirements or developing higher standards. Four was activate public spaces to connect residents by expanding community events in non-traditional locations. So this was trying to expand the footprint and reach of city activities into where, as it says, non-traditional locations have taken place and really expand the reach across the community. Number five was allocate resources for traffic safety improvement studies. Six, explore ways to attract young families as, and bring them in as residents. And number seven was explore strategies to address developed and undeveloped vacant properties, which we know is a substantial goal around here with a lot of opportunity. Any questions or comments?
That's pretty cut and dry there, just taking care of what we already got. Go ahead and.
I have a question, because something was added since our meeting on number four, in terms of the tactical steps. Look for purchasing, look at purchasing a downtown building that could be used for traveling, art shows, museums, and/or pop-up shows. I'd like to expand this, instead of limiting our purchase in downtown, because we want to see also the different corridors within the city. I'd like to remove downtown, just make it open. It can be in Artesia, it can be in Lakewood, it can be in Alonra, it can be in Rosecrans, Woodruff. So try not to limit it in downtown.
Go ahead, Jim.
Okay.
Yeah, and part of the, the process of thinking of putting this into this goal was to, it's kind of add-on to the effort of our small business entrepreneurial programs and micro-business programs. Where we'd have a, a potential space for rotating pop-ups and potentially bring in some of the entrepreneurs that are in our programs to utilize the space on a temporary basis to try out their products and their services and see if they will succeed and, and how they would do that. And that's kind of what the idea behind this item was.
Yeah, it's a good idea, but I'm just, I don't want to limit ourselves to downtown, that's all.
Understood.
Make it open to any, any area that's suitable for that specific purpose. It could be downtown eventually, but at least we open other, we explore other possibilities.
I am sensing no objection, Mayor, on that concept.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, with, with that said, would we like, like downtown and the, or?
Oh, just eliminate downtown.
Just eliminate downtown.
Take out downtown.
Okay.
It can be anywhere.
I'll take that as consensus, Mayor.
That's easy, that's not adding.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, I still have to, I'd like to try to add something here.
Okay. No, we don't have a consensus.
No, no, we do, this, we're good here, we're, this is, this is great. We're good, and, but can we go real quick to the survey that was provided in today's presentation?
Oh, like the two slides we had here?
Right, the two slides on the survey.
Which?
The one that stood out to me, next one, oh, no, no, this is it. The one that stood out to me. Can you, Mr. Ryder, could you, what does the red mean? What is the, the light salmon color, the light blue, and then the blue mean, and then the gray?
I can take this one, the, the bright pink that you see here is, when we ask these questions, they follow it up with a, is that a very important to you? Or is that a somewhat important to you, it is not super important to you, not at all important to you, or I don't know. So that's the intensity effectively is what you're looking at. For instance, the number of homeless, 55% of people said that's a very important and very serious issue to them. So that's just one example, but that's the breakdown.
Thank you, Mr. Smooth, so.
Then the number on the, the right, is it, is the pink and the red?
Right, right.
Correct.
The pink and the red. So, so, Mr. Smooth, on, thank you. Lack of affordable housing ranks pretty high, under 51, actually ranked second on this list, right? Am I, if I'm reading this correctly, as importance?
Yep, we hear that pretty consistently, that.
So I like that we touched on Measure A a little bit for homeless services side. Measure A has a housing production services side. I'd like to see that added to goal, our, our quality of life, or improved quality of life and, and four. I think that there are opportunities for us to help use Measure A funding, which we're paying taxes into already, for either more, you know, affordable housing for seasoned adults, for young, young adults, and young families and things of that nature. So I, I think I, this is a good place to put that. There's gonna be a lot of funding available in the pipeline, unless I missed it somewhere.
So what we have in 4.6, it's not in what you're seeing on the screen, but it is in the report and the staff report.
I see, yeah, ensure high-quality housing.
Oh, actually, we have.
Of all income levels, I do see that.
And we can add in specifically, if you want to target Measure A in that.
And I think to the Mayor Pro Tem's comments earlier is, and all available funding.
So just to make sure I'm interpreting this properly too, we're looking at, instead of adding this as an additional objective, adding clarity in the tactical steps that we're taking to take advantage of Measure A funding and other funds available to help support affordable housing as part of the explore ways to attract young families as residents?
Correct, it's, it's an additional resource, right, and the funding resource, basically. You have, we have it in here as, you know, under 4.6, encourage high-quality housing of all income levels. I just did not see any methods of funding, so I'm just clarifying on that.
We can add that into that tactical step.
Thank you, that's it, I told you it was minor.
Mayor, I assume there's consensus on that.
Yeah, there's consensus, let it roll.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my question is, Victor, the average price of a home in Bellflower is what, $777,000? What do you hope to accomplish with?
What do you mean?
It takes a lot of money to get a low-income people into a single-family home. Are you thinking more in building something that it houses multifamily?
Right, well, La Casa will be allocating funding and resources to the region. And so I just want to make sure that it's on our radar to recapture some of the taxes that we pay into that. I think that's key and important. And that can be us, like partnering with Wakeland, for example, that's, we just approved that to, at the last council meeting. That kind of a process, really, it's more of, of all income levels, really. I think we have a shortage in above-market rate, right? But if you look at what we've been developing, for example, even in the, in the housing project that we did here, it's not a housing project, but it's the, the Edgeway, the apartments. Those got booked so quickly.
At $3,000 a month for one bed and one bath.
And that's $3,000 a month.
Right.
Right, so, so more so is accessing the resources, the funding that we're already paying as taxpayers of Bellflower, and bringing them back to our city. And so I just wanted to clarify that.
Being pragmatic as to how much funding would be required to make them affordable.
Oh, absolutely, it's gonna be a lot, but yeah.
It's a lot.
We're already paying, might as well get it back.
But it being, to Victor's accolades, is to, for being, for entering in our strategic goal, there's one more thing, hey, look, we're asking for money, and it's been our plan for a long time. That's, that's what it's about.
Well, gonna be a lot of it.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, let's move.
Thank you. So finally, goal number five, details. Focused on strategic economic development, the city has a long history of this, so, you know, certainly consistent with your long-term vision and plans for the city. Item number one here was to continue strategic and creative property acquisitions. Two was execute on the city-controlled property to make impacts in the community. Three was explore an economic development plan that aligns areas in Bellflower with a focused economic development themes, industries, and related land use strategy. Item four was to begin planning for a comprehensive general plan update, which we all know is a substantial effort to get done. Five was solidify vision and plan for the future of downtown, more residential units, parking, complimentary, business types, things of that nature. As possible areas to focus with that strategy. Number six was to revisit the cannabis policy licensing and industry activity in Bellflower. And then finally was, number seven here was to evaluate alternative revenue sources and land use measures. Measures.
Okay. Anybody, everybody good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, that's kind of more what I was, I was expecting, but yeah, just to go through it and kind of one by one, it's, it's, as a group, it seems to be more absorb and easier than just sitting in front of your computer reading all.
Very well.
It's more fun too, huh?
I had more fun.
All right. What's your entertainment, guys?
I'll make a motion to approve and adopt the Bellflower 2025-2027 strategic plan.
Mr. Mayor, before we entertain the motion, no, no, you're, you're good, you're good.
A second before you comment.
Oh, what? Let me add another item, no, just kidding. I, I think, you know, it clicked when you, with Mayor Pro Tem talked about the focus on the use of Downtown Plaza on 4.4, and not just being the town.
4.4.
Yeah, 4.4, he talks about the not, you know, removing the Town Center Plaza.
Downtown in the word, the word.
The downtown, right. So, so that kind of triggered my mind on, on our economic plans. And I know we've talked about this, we've had conversations about this. Do we need to have a conversation about adding like the other corridors, the Artesia Corridor?
I think it's in here.
It, I, I saw it somewhere, but.
It's here, it's here, the study on the corridors.
Yeah. I saw it as a study, but do we need additional meat to it?
Although, it's on 5.3.
5.3, right, I'm looking at it, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm just saying, do we need additional, or is it this time only studies? Do we want to kind of be proactive, preemptive in the idea that once these studies come, we can move forward on presenting to the body and implement?
I mean, effectively, I would say this, when we talk about those specific areas where the council has expressed a very clear desire to rethink how our zoning code applies and drives the future vision you all have for the community. And you've looked at a, a number of those of late, the West Artesia specific plan, the DFD on Bellflower Boulevard, Arts District on Clark, Artesia Corridor, Woodruff. You've looked at all of these things, what we're really talking about ultimately is a update to your general plan. Remember, that's your overarching, long-term vision document for what the community is gonna be in 20, 30, 40, 50 years from now. And laying out some of those steps as to how we're gonna get there. In here, you have a specific target to really start looking at the funding necessary to do something like that. And then we went a little more specific to say, on those corridors, we want to start doing some specific studies to those as part of that process.
Understood, Mr. Smooth, so what you're saying is, once the studies come, then they can be a plan amendment, a general plan amendment?
They could.
Potentially, depending on what.
They could be part of a, certainly part of a general plan amendment, they could be, they could be as simple as minor amendments to your existing specific plans or a complete comprehensive general plan amendment.
All right, very good. Okay, I'm good, thank you.
I made my motion.
Got a motion on the floor? Oh, you already seconded. Councilmember Morse and a second by Mayor Pro Tem, Sunny Santinas. You got wrapped up in your question. Call roll, please.
Just making sure that includes, as amended, to include those minor amendments.
With the amendments.
Thank you.
That is concurrent with, with the motion and the second.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Morse?
Aye.
Councilmember Sanchez?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Santinas?
Aye.
Councilmember Coops?
Aye.
Mayor Denton?
Aye.
Okay, consent calendar. Anybody have any recusals?
Nope.
I bet not.
I don't.
Anybody would like to pull anything for discussion?
No.
I want to pull 14A. Just for discussion.
I'd like to pull 14E.
14A. 14E.
Really? Yeah, we're talking about money.
I didn't see that coming.
All right. What is?
14A is a warrant register.
Oh, okay. What is your beef, beef?
I have no beef. I just want to know where the money's going. Len, I'm gonna need you to answer this question.
Okay.
Are, are you on a mic there?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we contract with Santa Fe Springs to maintain our traffic signals, correct?
Correct.
Then why are we spending $15,000 for traffic signals with the city of Downey?
Because we, those are shared intersections that we have with the city of Downey. So they take the jurisdictional lead on those intersections. So is this, I'm not sure which exact item you're talking about, is this for?
It was $15,000, city of Downey, and it said for traffic signals, so I thought it was kind of redundant.
It could be for design. We're in the middle of designing a, a project along Foster Road where we will be doing some existing modifications to, to the traffic signals, as well as installing a new traffic, a new traffic signal up there along Foster. It could be for part of the design for that.
Okay.
Or like I said, we have existing joint use or shared agreements with the city of Downey for traffic signals where they have the lead on them, and that we pay our proportional share.
We're reimbursing them their total cost.
Correct.
Fifty-five, whatever the percentage is.
Of, of the, of the, the month by month, so they, we use Santa Fe Springs, they use I-Terris, it could be that item as well.
Okay, another question. You know how we had to redo the signal at Park and Bellflower Boulevard, it required like $125,000 extra that we pledged because the wiring was shot and not that old signal?
Correct, yeah, we had a, we had a change order for the conduit.
Did you notice that that continues to be a problem, that that signal still doesn't work?
The signal's on recall right now, so. The signal works, we're, we're, there's, there's actually a chip component that was installed, let me see, our last. installed, let me see, our last Friday off, which was a week ago.
Okay.
We were waiting on that. Once that component's installed, then they'll sit and do their programming of it as part of the, the final for that design. But again, ultimately, keep in mind, we have a tremendous amount of signals up and down Bellflower Boulevard, none of them are coordinated and that's intentional.
No, I get it, but after we spent so much money on replacing the thing and then $125,000 and then I still got guys out in the street with a stop sign, I'm thinking, what else do we need to do here? That's all I have.
All right, and that probably answers why there's that big dirt pile there on the sidewalk.
Right, that goes with it.
Or, or, yeah.
I saw that today, oh.
That goes with the signal.
Yeah, figured as much. All right, how about 14E?
All right, 14E. 14E is about the code of conduct and also rules and procedures of conducting city council meetings. I went over the documents and I cannot find anything new. Is there anything new about this or it's just basically?
Separated them.
We qualified them into a more readable form.
Yes, you're correct. We've split them up and then took the opportunity to scoop in other resolutions associated with city council procedures.
Okay, so there's nothing new?
No, there's very little, very little new.
Yeah, I would say that if there's any new stuff, it's stuff that we're already doing, it's just codifying it.
Right.
There's nothing that we're not doing.
So, no suits from March to October, right?
No suits from January to December?
I didn't see that.
No.
I'll move the consent calendar.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor by Councilmember Coop, second by Sunny Santinas. Without objection, that'll be the order, it was approved. Councilmember reports, Wendy, you have anything tonight?
No.
What about Victor Sanchez?
No report, thank you.
Good report, both of those. Mayor Pro Tem, Sunny Santinas?
Thank you, Mayor, just quickly, I just want to thank the teachers of Jefferson Elementary School and Washington Elementary School. Last Friday, was invited to participate in the celebration of Read Across America. So at Jefferson, I read to kindergarten students and Washington Elementary School, I read to first graders and second graders. So thank you again to all the teachers and the principals of these two schools. So that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Coops?
Yeah, I would like to also mention that I read Across America at Ramona School, my alumni school from 1956 and read for the third graders Mrs. Slager's class and it was very enjoyable. And they thanked me for the 103 books that were given on my outgoing mayor ceremony. I asked that books be contributed to that library rather than get some accolades that I didn't need anymore of, so it, they liked the books. And the second thing is, I need a little more information, I know we keep talking about this arts district and now we've even got constituents coming forward wanting to serve on a committee. I don't know what we're talking about. But we got people willing to serve on something that I don't know where it is, I don't know what it costs, I don't know what's involved, I, I don't, I don't get it.
Yeah, talk to Sunny.
Now, was that on the chart there that people were asking for an art district? I missed it.
No.
No, it's not there.
All right, well, okay, then it's one of your deals.
So one of, one of these days, I'll take it to Long Beach Art District. I'll take it to lunch.
No, we're talking, yeah.
There you go, okay, all right.
So the chamber sent out a survey too.
Okay.
Right?
Said we're missing an art district?
But you're, you, you retired, so you may not have got something from the chamber.
Right.
Yeah, for the art district, yeah, it was a survey.
All right, and it said, do you want an arts district, yes or no?
Yeah, it was just asked some basic questions. I figured that's you put that in there.
It's a city survey.
It's the city's survey.
Oh, the city? Oh.
The council has, the city, obviously approved by the council, the council has hired.
Well, I need some education because we've got constituents ready to serve and I don't even know what it is that we're, we're doing.
We'll, we'll talk.
All right.
Beth? Yeah, you wanna let Dan know he won't be able to sleep unless he knows that tonight.
Councilmember Coops, we had a special study session probably at least two years ago now for an arts district on Clark Avenue. It's been on our to-do list. Essentially, we need to come back to the council and explain what the implementation plan is. Part of the action items for a consultant to do was to just generally poll the community to see if there was any interest in it and what they're looking for. So it was actually a city survey that was sent out. I think it was posted on social media and blasted several times to get some feedback. We got some good feedback, we got over 200 responses and so now we have to compile that data and bring it back to the council for consideration.
All right, so I'm not sure, are we renting property, we're purchasing property, we're using existing property? You know, there's so many unanswered factions here.
We are there yet.
We're not quite there yet.
We're not there yet, we're too far behind.
Well, we got a committee ready to go, so.
There's no, there's no committee.
No, you offered, the lady offered it to serve on.
So what we had done so far is hire a consultant and the consultant did some survey, did some walk around the city, surveyed the, the area that we are thinking of being, having a art district and he came back to us, made a presentation to the council. And if I remember correctly, we gave him, we gave him, say, okay, go ahead and proceed in terms of continuing the study. That's where we are.
All right.
And the next step was the survey, to survey the, the, get feedback from the, from our residents and Elizabeth's collecting those.
Now, what part of Clark Street are you thinking?
Flower to Alondra or something like that?
Well, that's Victor's district, isn't it?
Yeah.
No, that's the other way.
On Clark, Clark Street.
Okay, so that's Sunny's district.
I thought we were commissioning it for the entire, all the way to the south border potentially as a part of the study.
He did, but in terms of the recommendation, if you remember, he recommended just from Alondra to Flower.
Mr. Mayor, why don't we do this to not go too far with this this evening when it's not on the agenda? Why don't we plan to bring this item back to you sooner rather than later for discussion?
Sounds like a great idea.
Yeah, tune it up a little bit and bring old Dan into the fold here.
So I, obviously I didn't get, didn't see the city's response for the survey. I saw the chamber, like you said, that it got blasted. I saw a chamber send it to me.
Okay.
But I didn't know it was a city one, so.
It was the city's website.
Yeah, there was, it was a survey we put out, the chamber blasted out for us as well.